Over a year, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is conflict of interest review. I'll individually poll each member regarding any conflict of interest with the agenda items this evening, or any inappropriate contact with any interested party. And just a brief review, just paraphrasing our rules concerning conflict of interest. Conflict could be a direct concern, land adjacent to your property, a financial interest direct through an employer, through a family member, a business relationship, or any other relationship that might involve a financial gain or loss that's more than just incidental. And then paraphrasing ex parte contact, any contact with an applicant or agent of an applicant that could be interpreted as intended to influence a member's vote. So I will ask if any member has any disclosure they wish to make concerning any of the proceeding. Mr. Lewis?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Nestor?
No, I have none.
Ms. Sakinga?
No.
Ms. Mayor?
I have none.
Ms. Marinelli?
None.
And Straub has none. Next item is approval of the agenda. Anyone have any changes they would like to make? Hearing none, the agenda will be approved as presented. Next agenda item is public comment. This is really on items that are not on the agenda. There will be separate public comment for tonight's agenda item 6B, the public hearing on the development. But in case anyone has anything they'd like to say to us about anything other than that, this would be your opportunity to say it. And if you do, I appreciate if you would please approach the lectern and clearly state for the record your name and address. Seeing none, public participation for this segment will be closed. Next agenda item, 6A, approval of the planning commission bylaws. This is the document that we worked on a couple of months ago, and I think we've incorporated everyone's comments. I also like to remind the group that if there is anything that needs further tweaking, we have an opportunity to do that at future, preferably future working session. But this is just our own document to help facilitate what it is we do. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Mayor?
Second.
Is that Nestor?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the motion has been moved by Mayor, supported by Nestor, that we adopt the planning commission bylaws as presented. Roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Sakinga?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah.
Ms. Marinelli?
Yes.
Straub votes yes, that's six yes, zero no, and one absent. Item 6B, public hearing for 20 PC 200.1, Deletzky, 11677 North Territorial Road, open space community. Final site. We're going to proceed in the following order. First, staff presentation and questions from the planning commission. Next, applicant presentation, if they so desire, and/or comments and questions from the planning commissioners. After that, we will open up for the public hearing, public comment, and then any staff and/or applicant additional comments. And then we'll enter into planning commission deliberations. Planning commission action on the site plan resolution. Since this is the final site plan, and I think we are going to hear Mr. Rohr tell us that all required information has been submitted, I suggest that only one of the following possible outcomes will be appropriate. Either A, grant approval, perhaps with conditions, as long as those conditions do not substantively alter the proposal before us, or B, deny approval, which would be appropriate if the planning commission determines the plan before us does not comply with the provisions of the zoning ordinance under which it has been submitted, which in this case is the 2003 zoning ordinance as amended in 2018. However, if planning commission determines that the application is missing some significant information, we could move to postpone it to a time certain to allow for receipt of that information. Just kind of a reminder of where we fit into all of this. A property owner has the right to develop their property to the fullest extent allowed under the Dexter Township zoning ordinance and whatever other applicable laws and regulations. The role of the planning commission is to determine if the site plan before us has complied with the township zoning ordinance. Some details are not within our purview, but are handled administratively by Director of Planning and Zoning and the Township Engineers, sometimes after compliance is demonstrated or approval by other agencies. Examples of that might be approval by the road commission, county public health department, county water resources commissioner, and then, you know, final approval by DBZ that they have achieved zoning compliance. Now, having said that, I would still encourage thorough, open discussion, and I would ask Mr. Rohr and Ms. Sakinga to note any issues that we may discuss that are not part of the resolution tonight, but might appropriately be incorporated into the development agreement when the township board deals with that later on. Just a reminder that regardless of whatever other discussion that we have, as free and open as it might be, that our decision must be based on whether or not the application meets the standards that are set forth in the version of the zoning ordinance that I referenced. So at this point, Mr. Rohr, please present the project to us. Any questions of planning commissioners for Mr. Rohr? And we can always come back to them. Who's representing the applicant tonight? Mr. Pasco?
Yes, Todd Pasco with Atwell. Hello, this is Todd Pasco with Atwell. Is it working? I don't really have a presentation tonight. As David mentioned, we have some adjustments to make for fire and road commission and township engineer that don't substantially change the plan. What we're hoping for tonight is that you guys would be willing to grant approval so we can move along to the next steps, which for us would be revise the plans and then hopefully go to the board next month. And then following that, we'd like to get a pre-construction meeting and try and get going before bad weather hits us in the fall. So that's our goal, is to try and move this forward so we can try and get construction going later this year. With that, Natalie is here also, and her and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, we'll ask planning commissioners in just a moment. I just wanted to point out, and I don't want this to sound snarky, and I don't want to get, you know, some clerical person in trouble, but how after all this time do we end up with a picture smack dab in the middle of the front page of the packet that has 51 building sites instead of the 48 that have been before us?
It's just an oversight.
Anything else we, and I don't mean this in a nasty sort of way, but anything else in here that you're aware of that maybe?
No, updating the picture is a different task when we're updating the plans for recent metal. And since there's no numbers on those lots, we just didn't notice it. Somebody counted, and that's how they noticed it. The plan is very similar, it's just we didn't notice that we hadn't updated it. But you'll see on every other sheet, it's 48 lots as approved.
Yeah, the words are right on this sheet, just
Yeah, it's just
The picture is just a little
It's a separate task, it's a separate person in our office that does that, and it just didn't get done.
All right, thank you. Any planning commissioner have question for Mr. Pasco? Mr. Lewis?
Have you had a chance to review OHM's final review dated, or current review dated July 20th of 2020?
Yes.
Any concerns with that?
And I have spoken with Rachel, and we'll get those revisions made.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I had a question about the fire protection, because I know that the fire department has said that the fire protection is going to be provided from the pond at Hartman Farms, which is going to be upgraded. So I, under the current, the new revised ordinance, I think you'd have to have a pond on-site, but I just wanted to confirm that under the prior ordinance, it is, the fire department has the latitude to decide they can use the Hartman Farms pond?
Yes, and we've had lots of discussions with the fire department. Part of the goal of updating Hartman is to have one that satisfies another level of fire protection, which actually can be beneficial to the whole community. We originally had one on our site, but the fire department actually asked us to consider this.
Okay. Thank you.
That's interesting.
I'm uncomfortable, I said this to you, Marty, before, but before the meeting, but it's uncomfortable to get a note from OHM that says, recommend against approval for this long list of reasons, and then to hear that the reasons are not material. It makes me uncomfortable to then go into a meeting and approve a final site plan when the only documentation I have from the engineers says recommends against approval.
Yeah, Mr. Rohr, could you address that, please, and maybe differentiate between? So the engineers have a list of things that need to be done. Some of those, I think it's fair to expect, would have been done by this stage in the process, but for us that all of those are going to be done, and none of those open issues is critical for this stage of our deliberations, if that is in fact the case.
Yes, it's a fair question. Often engineers come back not looking at the issue. Typically, the engineers are looking at stormwater management, competition issues, retention issues. They're looking at a lot of technical issues that actually technically go off to construction, not to buildings. And so they're always looking towards to add this or they have to add some details that we do across the construction. I always clarify that when we're like, these changes, it's essentially a change to the site plan. And it always should, you know, the site plan, the road might change. No home will be moved, or lots will be moved, which is often how it's handled for destruction and issues that we need to resolve. And the engineer developers are always aware that there is another thing that's at hand because the construction base always requires what you have to do for the settlement base to destroy. So it's a lot more detail to have to do. How the site is basically the answer.
Can we approve the site plan satisfying the engineers' minds?
Absolutely, and engineers won't ever to go. Engineering-wise, they won't really take the top of the premise, but definitely absolutely. All of these things will be taken care of for the community.
Anybody else have anything else at this point?
Yeah, I do. One of the general information, there's a statement here about driveway, and it says that it's going to enter from the east of the site, Dexter Town Hall Road. And both on the front page picture, the drawing, it shows that there's a road going onto North Territorial. I think we talked about that at one point, but I guess I can't recall what the answer is.
Yeah, well, the exit there, the entrance is for emergency.
Okay.
So it's narrow enough where we think that it's too extensive for the planning.
So how do you manage that as an emergency exit only? Is there a gate or something there? How's that work?
Yeah, the fire department has asked for a gate and a knox box, so they'll have the gate.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Rohr, I should have asked this earlier, I just forgot. Just wanted to ensure that proper notice has been sent, proper publication has been made in township's paper of record. You verify that, please?
Yeah, the letters were now two weeks ago, and I noticed that if we don't have, because of publishing, it's not a good idea.
Thank you. And if we could get a copy of the letter, and a copy, you know, just generic copy of the letter, and a copy of what got published in the paper, if that could go as part of the record of this meeting, please?
Typically, you have to stand up to the session beginning of the meeting, you have to look at the notice, the letter, copy, and then it's on.
Thank you. Any other planning commissioner have anything at this point?
I have another question. So the development agreement is something that's handled administratively by the township and not subject to approval by the planning commission?
It will be before the council board for approval in the next fifteen hours. Yeah, it's not so much administrative, it's very much a document negotiated with township. It has to be the government's bylaws.
Is there any updated information on the groundwater, the sampling? Or, you know, I think the last time we met on this, there was arsenic in the water. Has there been any developments on that?
As far as I know, the hydropower system that we have now is still running.
I have one question, Mr. Pasco. Multiple times, the planning commission is asked for prototypical house plans. It's in the minutes of these meetings, at least twice, July and September of 2020. Is there any reluctance in providing prototypical plans? Front elevation sketches, anything like that?
No, I didn't know that. Yeah, the same technical department, the homes, the
All right, thank you. You know, at this point, any of that kind of information would go forward to the, well, to the DBZ, mainly into the township board for any incorporation of development agreement, assuming that this is the last time we deal with this tonight. All right, thank you. Anybody have anything else? We'll come back, and we can ask other questions during our deliberations. But if not, at 7:25, we're open for public comment on the site plan. If anyone wants to address us, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address for the record. It's not intended to be a dialogue, so we're not really going to enter into questions and answers, but if there are questions that I can facilitate, please address those to the chair. We'll see if we can get them answered tonight. And per our bylaws, please limit your remarks to five minutes. Ms. Sanders?
Hi there, I'm Laura Sanders. I'm at 11774 Quigley Road, and I am a trustee of the township, but today I'm just here as a concerned person of the public. And most folks know that our property kind of juts right into this big swath of plan that's, you know, going to be developed. So, I mean, I don't have anything officially planned, but I'm concerned, because I was at the last commission meeting where this was discussed, and these issues around water and water safety came up, these issues around traffic and driveway, you know, roadways, and accident on the corner came up. There was a house plan prototype requested, and I just don't understand why, it's been three, I don't know, almost three months, two or three months, why the developer hasn't taken those questions and concerns seriously. We are community about these things, and it just seems like the hydrological study, if it wasn't updated, why not? If the traffic study hasn't been reviewed again, why not? I mean, these have been concerns that have been, you know, put out there by the community, many people, many times, over time. So I don't understand not acting on them in the last couple of months, and having an accurate planning packet. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, at 7:28 PM, public comment will be closed. Just a couple of comments to Ms. Sanders' remarks. The hydrogeological study, I think, if I remember correctly, was provided just before our last meeting. And it's, I printed out just a few pages, but it's pretty extensive. As was pointed out, there is some arsenic in some of the wells. That was topic of quite a bit of public comment. I don't know, it might have been a couple of meetings ago. I expect that both through the township and through the county environmental health department, those types of issues will have to be addressed. And I don't want to sound like I know more than I do, but it appears from the hydrogeological study that there is not anticipation that the addition of that number of wells will affect the capacity of the aquifer in any appreciable way. We have received a new, recent traffic study. It's not recent data, but it's a recent traffic study that was updated from some older data. And I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Rohr, but if you can perhaps interpret for us what that says, and I think, you know, mainly, okay, so so they've determined how many trips will be in and out of Deletzky Farms, but primarily, the conclusion about whether any, I don't know, special treatment, let's say, needs to be made for acceleration, deceleration, left turn, whatever. Could you please kind of give us a summary of that?
So the last kind of impact on the site numbers, we, some of them was hanging, they overlapped when the pandemic started. So the updating takes it to 20 hours, two days, June, Monday, June 11th, 2018, the clear stage of 7th of 2017. These numbers were taken, this is a baseline, because they were under the kind of optimal traffic conditions for the township. This is pre-pandemic, so people were able to work, this is under normal, normal service levels. So those numbers were taken. Essentially, the summary provided is that there is no traffic radiation required from the entrance on the town hall road. And that is essentially, he doesn't know what I believe is due, that's kind of some age down. So the conclusions are the exact same as the previous. So if that should be the traffic impact of houses, it's up there, it is. This current ethic, it isn't that it's kind of sixteen months ago, on the neutral pressure.
I think they used an escalator, too. They escalated the 2017 numbers based on escalation and overall.
We should also point out, I think it was this afternoon, we received comments from a resident that expressed some of the same traffic concerns that Ms. Sanders just expressed. Okay, what's planning commission's pleasure? How would you like to proceed on this issue?
I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure, we can state the traffic study if you'd like, for now. I'm not sure if a traffic study done in 2018 is sufficient, especially if schools not in session. The only time that traffic backs up is when schools in session. So a traffic study, when schools The only time that traffic backs up is when school's in session. So, a traffic study when school's not in session isn't actually going to be that helpful for the majority of the year. It's just not. I live on that corner. I know how dangerous, or, Nor Territorial and Dexter Town Hall is. And changing the exit entrance only to Dexter Town Hall and then putting it directly across from another entrance exit with speeds of fifty-five miles an hour is concerning to me, especially with the amount of kids and drivers that are on the road trying to pull out of there and turn left is going to be hard, going to be hard. Almost makes me want to think twice about the emergency entrance, to think that maybe that could be an exit only, and that would alleviate a lot of the, the traffic that's going to come out onto Dexter Town Hall Road. If you made the, the emergency exit, an exit only and a right turn only, you're going to alleviate some, a little bit of that backup that's going to happen with the only way in and out for, for the people that live there. When I pull out now on Dexter Town Hall, on the top of a hill, it's, it's concerning. Even turning into Hartman Farms from that hill, being in a higher vehicle, you have to wait and watch and look as high as you can because people are coming really fast. And, you know, if you hesitate for a second, you might miss them if you look, if you don't really, really look before you turn. So, I'm just not, I just don't feel good about saying that there's, that there'd be no traffic remediation needed at all, not even a left turn lane or anything. It's just, excuse me, pause.
The June days, June eleventh and June twelfth, our, school was in session, and the July, July twenty-seventh and July twenty-eighth data points, school was not in session. So, so for two of the four days that were included in the data set, school was not in session.
But that, and that is four years ago, and we've had a lot of development and people move in since then in that exact corner. That's my concern. I mean, you've got an entire half of the face of development that wasn't around, you know, so we've got another thirty columns over there that didn't get incorporated into that traffic study.
Yeah, I appreciate those points. There was some discussion, I don't know, it might have been originally concern about, well, I know originally there was concern about traffic entering, exiting territorial, depending on which way you go, and, and if it was limited, who's going to enforce and how well, and is that going to create a different kind of problem? So, the question was raised, the developers came up with their own solution, which was mostly accepted by the Planning Commission. There was further discussion about what are, you know, good traffic counts, certainly not the past year and a half or so with COVID, but there was also discussion about, yeah, getting counts while school is on, like, like summer and fall type counts. So, you get, you know, both the major activities in Dexter Township. I, I think there are probably some scenarios where, you know, somebody slow pulling a boat down territorial can make a bigger traffic jam than about anybody else. So, it's a, it's a complex situation that, you know, we can expect will become even more complex as, you know, traffic pressures increase. Anybody have anything else? Any suggestions on how to proceed?
I, I just, one of the earlier meetings, I thought we had talked about the assumption that it's going to be point five school-aged children per household, and where that number came from, and I, because I guess the school, it's, the fact that a school can accommodate these direct students is based on that number, and whether or not that's a realistic number, and I thought someone was going to check on that.
Yeah, I don't remember that question really, not, although you did talk to the school district office about it.
You had brought it to the Board of Education? Okay. Back in Copper Meadows, you guys were told to take it to the Board of Education and not the superintendent in the future for informing and have them give you some direction. That was in a note. That was for Hartman Farms, in the Copper, in Hartman Farms.
I mean, you, Kim, do you, you live in Hartman Farms, correct?
I do.
I mean, do you have any sense, and I mean, I realize it's not an exact number, but do you, or do you think there's like?
Oh, three is probably, two and a half, but three is probably more the average.
I mean, it just seems to me like there are a lot of kids in Dexter.
Absolutely, especially in these big houses with multiple bedrooms. They're not empty nesters. There are people with many kids. I have three, and I'm probably the average.
So, if there are concerns, still concerns about these, about the traffic study, because the population has grown in that area and this is a summer count, can we approve, can we put that as a contingency on a site approval, an improved, a better, a better, or, or what do you suggest?
I imagine we can. We'll ask Mr. Rohr for, for his opinion. I would think there could be some larger impact if, if it gave us different results. You know what I mean? If, if the traffic counts were such that you should have a different traffic pattern, you know, there, there should be left turn lanes, for example, that might be a substantive change to the plan, but, Mr. Rohr, what do you think?
Well, before you answer, David, can I just add to this? Why, the reason I'm asking, because I looked at the school calendar. So, for that June eleventh, it was a full day of school, and there were forty-eight hundred almost traffic, you know, daily uses. For the other days, June eighteenth, and then July seventeenth, and July, July twenty-seventh and July twenty-eighth, the use was significantly lost, so it goes from forty-eight hundred to sixteen hundred the next day, but I think that was a half day of school, an exam day. And then for the no-school days, it's fourteen hundred and five, all, less than six hundred. So, it's a big, there's, the, there's only, if, if only one of those days is a right road school day, and that day is close to five thousand daily uses, and the other three days are below fifteen hundred, we, I would be afraid that we're making a mistake if we don't put in a turn lane or whatever. You know, if we find that in fact the daily use average is five thousand, but we, we, but they put it at less than two thousand, which they did, then we may really have a traffic issue.
It's my understanding is that the traffic impact does not, not the mitigation, Washoung County Road Commission also has to say that, and it's my understanding that the fair house, those that would be required, that they would make that requirement.
That's correct. So, I'll start out by saying I'm not a traffic engineer. That's why we hire one. And the first thing a traffic engineer does is meets with the road commission to talk about where and when to get traffic counts, and because of COVID, the dates mentioned were determined. And also, the, the road commission has multiple traffic engineers that review our, our traffic data. So, they take the best data they can find, and then they put escalations in for, for the future. So, that's how it gets, that's how it happens. I don't know, it, it, yeah, I guess I don't know what else to say. Traffic engineers at the road commission ultimately approve this, and independent study is done by our group.
So, Mr. Rohr, and I'm not wanting to put you on the spot and, you know, ask for like a political opinion, but a professional opinion, you see any issue with us moving forward on this with some traffic issues maybe less than certain, since the road commission is going to get the last look at it?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, they should, the Washington County Road Commission side of communication is necessary. That would take place on their, still allows protection or affect the site layout in a way. If they require the developer to put a turn lane and subration lane, then that would be more like developer, that, you know, to have a program. So, the manager won't ultimately get that, how the site is going now, and how the function outside of that, you know, entrance pass.
Ms. Pascoe?
Yeah, just a final clarification. First thing, you should approve the traffic study, what four day they do.
All right. Thank you. And I guess maybe the only other comment I would have about that, there are several members of Township Board, yourself included, that have, you know, noted or, or made note of, or I would expect would carry forward, you know, concerns about traffic, certainly part of what's on David's list. So, as it moves forward, I, I would expect that to not be forgotten or overlooked.
And it sounds like it's not exactly the purview of the Planning Commission.
It really isn't.
Because the road work would be in the road commission's regular, and not affecting the site plan and where approving the site plan. Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, also that, that work would take place in a, that is there, is there a, that's there, that's the intention.
Okay, group, what would you like to do?
I just have a quick question. Is there an opportunity for mitigative action down the road? And by that, I, you know, as, as time goes on, there's going to continue to be more and more development, and a lot of that development may be occurring outside of Dexter Township, which we have no control over. Yet, two corridor roads here that are being used by, by the non-Dexter residents, it's going to be filling up the road. At that point, I think it's conceivable that it could be more dangerous through time for somebody to get in and out, and if it's not recommended or required to begin with, is there mitigative opportunities down the road to say, hey, this is getting to be a little more dangerous than we anticipated, we need a turn lane?
What I saw in the development spread, they get out of township, out of town traffic, and it's, and that, a lot of traffic engineer, but typically, it's, once it becomes an issue, then the road commission begins the process of figuring out how to solve the issue. That's why they do yearly traffic counts on all major roads and monitor everybody else to turn, and roundabouts in the city. Dexter, I was in traffic land very long before the roundabouts, and the roundabouts were over moved and not sure.
Yeah.
They thought, they saw to fix an issue that it, all the time, it happened, it's worse, and that's typically the way that traffic engineering works, is that it's progress and more, and problems, and more, and their data starts to present a typical, we're moving to progress, and so, that's the road.
All right, good answer.
Can I clarify something?
Please.
The reference is that the traffic is not really an issue to the, I mean, from how it is, but if that grows and access inside circulation, that is Planning Commission concern. You know, just defer to the Washington County Road Commission, it is a concern for the Planning Commission.
It is a concern, and one of the major concerns that they have with traffic was the entrance, roundabout, territorial, for those. But, yeah, access is obviously a major component of the study, but how that access is navigated off the road commission regularly?
I, I understand. I just want to clarify, because it almost seems like.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you understand it wasn't your, your, your idea?
Everything inside is. We, we made some comments, I don't know, the first meeting, however far back that goes, about ingress, egress on territorial. But, yeah, this is, this part is largely not our traffic, but we can influence some things.
Well, I, I think site circulation also includes getting in and out, backups into the subdivisions, as well as people coming in and out of subdivisions. But I think under your zoning orders, it is something you need to be concerned about. I'm not saying, when we're together, understanding is an issue for you to consider, not just circulation, if that's a subdivision.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Pauline Chet doesn't comment on this issue, I assume, because it, again, is outside the limits of the site plan?
Yeah, typically, because there, because, because the kind of road commission engineers who do more network, they will, there, they comment obviously on retention, on, the, 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 the road access, you know, and, you know, your role rating, but they won't typically address things that are, they kind of, the road commission.
So, at this point, for this specific development, there has been some communication with both Washtenaw County Road Commission and Washtenaw County Health Department regarding water. We don't have their final determinations because their, their sequence of permitting and, and commenting is after us, unfortunately, but going for, so we don't have that for this particular development. But going forward, is there a way that the Planning Commission can become aware of the activities with those two county governments to understand whether things are going smoothly, are they getting complicated, or, or something that might give and educate the Planning Commission and the public regarding all of our developments going forward? Even though they haven't given a final determination.
To that, to that, I would actually suggest having a traffic engineer from Washtenaw County Road Commission come to the planning commission, explain the development process where, and at what point they review traffic impacts, and when they require an evaluation. I also think you might as well develop the, the Health Department, come to the planning commission, explain their processes, explain where to develop the process, and their test, and come to them and then review their first one, as well. So, I don't know, either one of them have a, 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 a letter that they would send, but I think having them come and do a, a presentation as to where they're going to call processes.
As one, personally, I think that would be a great idea. I think it'd be a good education for us as commissioners, and if the public were allowed to, of course, it'd be, hopefully, it'd be an open meeting, and we can invite the public, and I think that would be a very good move on our part.
I, I endorse that also, and I do think, also, it would also be good to hear from the fire department.
Yeah, kind of action to that point, fire department actually is giving, don't look like a presentation of July sixteen, to the township, on, on, on fire. Yeah, we have to have fire chief, and, and give a presentation on what they look at and how they, what they expect, and so, with the water access.
So, Mr. Rohr, hypothetically, if the development was before us, and the Planning Commission said, hey, we'd really like the hill to be shaved down six feet, and a left turn lane installed on a, you know, major paved road in the township, what would our standing be?
Um, the planning commission happens, you know, I think that's, that is controlled by the Washington County Road Commission, it's, it's their decision. So, they could request that, or they could ask that, but there isn't any requirement. And our organs have the requirement because of outside, basically, the kind of.
All right, thank you.
It's more important, you're, you can't require things to outside the property lines to be developed, but it is a concern to be addressed when we're dealing with the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
How, how can it be addressed in the plan if it's, if we have no purview outside of the boundaries of the site?
If there is a concern of the planning commission, for instance, the issue brought up of use of point five child per household, and how that impacts, the traffic impacts, but if that. the, if that's a concern, you can always table case and ask for the traffic engineer to come and testify. And so you can ask him directly where that comes came from, and you have to justify it if you're satisfied. You could go ahead and approve the plan, or you could deny the plan, absent, you know, that type of answer that you're looking for. And that's suggesting that, using that as an example of what, why these things are, maybe not your ultimate decision, but it was, it is an element of what you're considering, making your decision, whether to approve or disapprove of the site plan.
All right, what's next? We've, I don't know, I think this is the fifth time maybe for most of us, the, take that back, fifth time for some of us, half of us, the third time, I think, for the other half of us. We have a draft resolution that was provided to us, and page two of three of that draft resolution, there are a number of conditions listed. This could be a good time for somebody to move affirmative or the negative, and if it's in the affirmative, to consider whether or not you want some additional conditions to be listed in addition to the ones that are highlighted in yellow. And which, for anybody who doesn't have this, so, so we have a draft resolution in front of us, it's something the staff provides, just so we, we get all the important points down, we're not just trying to make this up as we go along. And the conditions that are listed as this has been provided to us would be, A, the approval shall not be effective until the township board approves the development agreement for the project; B, the approval shall not be effective until the master deed and bylaws outlining the preservation of the open spaces have been approved by the township attorney; C, this approval shall not be effective until the project has received approval from the Washtenaw County Road Commission; D, this project shall comply with all applicable county, state, and federal requirements for the proposed use; and E, the approval shall not take effect until the applicant has paid in full all monies owed to the township for fees, expenses, and/or other related issues related to the open space community and preliminary site plan review. Anybody ready to dispose of the resolution?
I guess, I'd, under C, I would, I would say the Washtenaw County Road Commission and the Washtenaw County Environmental Health Department, because I think that they have not approved it yet.
Sure. I think there needs to be a motion first, and then discussion, and then discussion.
That would be good parliamentary procedure, thank you. All right. I would gladly entertain someone moving this, and then it's open for free discussion.
Well, then I will, I will move it.
Moved by mayor, do we have support?
Support.
By Lewis. Discussion, I think Ms. Mayor had...
Suggested adding, and the Washtenaw County Environmental Health Department to...
So would we like to add that as part of that sentence, or just add that as an additional condition? I don't know that it matters either way, just... Sir?
I had actually recommended adding, and G, I was going to recommend adding, and G, this approval shall not be effective until the project has received approval from the Washtenaw County Department of Health Department for the location of the access wells. And based upon the earlier conversation, I also would recommend, and H, this approval shall not be effective until OHM approves the revision to the final site plan to address the July twenty, three forty.
So I have A through E now, unless I missed one, so...
I think it's F and G.
So we're adding F and G?
[laughing]
All right. And, and, yeah, further to the Environmental Health Department, so we've got location, the onsite wells, and especially since it's been an issue in the community, would it be appropriate to add something about the details of any remediation of the high arsenic wells?
Well, again...
How far should we get into this?
Similar to the road commission issue, ultimately, approval of the well is totally a county issue. You are highlighting the fact, and frankly, arguably, that could have been covered in E, but I think to clarify, adding that it's only a condition of approval of the Washtenaw County Environmental Health Department, I mean, ultimately, they'll be approving that. So...
Yeah, thank you.
If you can make that a condition, if you can't believe, do more than that.
I think a detail on that that has been brought to light is that there may have been, and David, don't let me say something wrong, I think there may have been some situations where, yes, in the well, the health department may have approved it, I don't know, there may have been a case where they approved it without remediation plan, but it kind of goes to a question that the planning commission asked, I think it was in our last meeting, about, so, if you do get a high arsenic well, what's, what's the plan? Is it going to be just, say, reverse osmosis system under the sink, or whole house, or what? And I appreciate your comments keeping us on the straight and narrow. I don't know if that oversteps planning commission authority, but I think there's some interest expressed in the past about how, how do we ensure that our future residents are taken care of most appropriately?
With regard to well water issues particularly?
Yes.
That's not a county's determination. I think you rely on the county health department to make that determination. I think there has been a huge raise in the township, but hopefully, the county may take a closer look at it. But ultimately, if it does meet their criteria, they issue the first as well, just like if you're satisfied, if the site plan satisfies all the ordinance requirements, for the township, you approve the site plan. You can condition, make reasonable conditions, but ultimately, those decisions are township and the site plan, all waters, the township.
My question. I have a question. I understand what you're saying. My concern is how are the residents that buy those homes, they're not going to be informed by the county health department? How are they going to be informed what they're buying? How are they going to be informed what the quality of water is in their well? Is that something that's going to be in the bylaws? Are they going to have to sign something attesting to the fact that here's my plot of land, and here is the test results from my well that I'm buying?
There's an answer, the, I thought it was, and the health agreement, as well as approvals, that still need approval.
But that, that sounds like that's how they will be informed, then? It'll be like...
Well, if, if the wells are approved, then they're approved, there's nothing to inform people about if there are, if approval with conditions about, you know, addressing a high level of arsenic or something. As long as they satisfy those conditions, it's approved. That would be something that a buyer of a home, individuals may inquire about, but it's also something that will be followed up in the, that should be bylaws and its developing. So...
Well, just another way to think about that is, you've got people coming in that have never had septic before, right? And the sewers are going to be approved eventually through multi-lit, right? And the people buy the home, and here's their sewer, they don't have anything to do with it, no one's telling them about it, but you do have a grinder on your property. Are they going to be informed about the grinder, what not to put in it, that it could, you know?
Well, yeah, there's...
Great, that's not a safety issue, much.
Legally, legally, it's a, it's really a buyer beware situation, you know, entering into a purchase, there's a degree of responsibility you take in, in making the purchase. There's also a degree of responsibility the seller has to disclose.
Right, right.
And I'm not sure that's something that can be addressed at the site plan level.
Gotcha.
But again, the well approval particularly is handled by the county, and the county will, you know...
Stipulate their permits.
Proven as, according to their...
Gotcha, thank you.
I think that Washtenaw County has a POS system, where they're required to have at point of sale, a water testing, not just during the construction process, but during the site, once you've decided you're going to purchase that property. I think that the, that the seller is obligated. Would you know if that's the case?
I know, I know for a fact that Livingston County has, but I, I'm sorry.
I think that it is in Washtenaw's law.
It's not.
It's not?
Nope. It's called time of sale, and it only applies to homes that are two years old. The builder is not actually...
Oh, older.
...considered a seller. Time of sale is only in the case of a home that originally existed, was selling to someone else.
Okay.
But you have to occupy that house for two years. If you occupy a house, turn around and sell within a year, you do not need another time of sale.
Okay.
But yes, there are instances of homes being sold this year with no recent tests for, I think, sixteen years or so. So yeah, there's, I wish there was a time of sale for all homes regardless, but that's a common one.
So Mr. Roberts, based on your previous comments, would it be inadvisable of the planning commission to ask a question and get the answer on the public record, the commitment of what a prospective developer might do in the situation of inadequate water quality? Or should that be best left to the health department, or even the development agreement?
I understand the concern, and I know this concern felt for in the township about this issue, that it's really not a question you could fairly ask anyone, because the county hasn't even, as far as I understand, the county hasn't finished its approval process of any of these wells. And so we don't know what the recommendations would be, if any. If it is found to be a particular well has an arsenic issue, there are some steps that can be taken to address that, but not knowing what those steps are, I think it would be unfair to, you know, try to make your determination contingent of how the developer would respond to something that hasn't even arisen yet, and from which there may be multiple ways to handle. So I think the condition, that I think, yes, it would be about the most effective method, say, the site plan level. I don't know if it's a good question.
It does, thank you, yes. Appreciate it. Okay, folks?
Can I ask a question for our attorney?
Sure.
Just without going into an entire litany, what does D cover? D, it's the county, state, and federal requirements.
It's a catch-all. You know, obviously, they're going to have to get a lot of approvals. I think there's, was there some weather involved in this? So that's kind of catch-all. Arguably, the, the health department would be incorporated in that. I think it's important to include that as a separate condition, just so everybody's clear on it. But this is, D is kind of catch-all, but you need to have all permits in order for the site plan approval to be effective.
Thank you.
So maybe recap a little bit, and make sure that we can get the wording down, assuming that, that we're going to want to incorporate these suggestions. So F, I think says, shall not be effective until Washtenaw County Public Health Department approves the location of onsite wells?
That was based upon the comment from the planning, from Mr. Rohr.
All right. And G is, shall not be effective until OHM approves, I think, per the engineering report. And I was, I thought for sure, I printed everything out, and I don't, I don't have it with me, I guess, or I buried it someplace. What was the date on the report?
My notes, Robert.
Thank you.
It was mentioned July twenty.
July twenty, thank you. Thank you, both. So I guess I'd have to say something like, OHM approval...
Resolution of the findings?
Res, yeah, thank you. Resolution of findings in the engineering report of July twenty, twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Did we want to have a fire department, a similar, can you just ask Christie, do you want to have a similar?
I mean, I guess, you know, as explained, it's under the previous ordinance, and then they have approved that, I think.
And we do have the letter of, I don't know, approval, I guess you would call it, from fire inspector. I don't know that it hurts anything, but I think we've got it, so it seems like it's kind of extraneous maybe at that point. All right, so we have motion... I'm sorry.
I don't know where we're going yet, but I just saw there's still an invasive species on this list. I didn't know if we were staying with the resolution we're going to put forward, or is there anything else?
In the landscape plan?
Yeah, page thirty-three, last time, in the last plans, I pointed out that it was an invasive species, and considering we're trying to preserve rural charm, that would be not planting invasive or nuisance species of trees. It's the Cleveland Select or Bradford Pear, any of those shouldn't be.
The Washtenaw County Natural Areas Program produces, publishes an invasive species list, I believe, so we could...
Yeah, last time I said, don't put it on the plant. It's still there.
Sorry, which one was that?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna confirm. I believe it's Washtenaw County Natural Areas Program, but I want to make sure that it's not the city name.
So Mr. Rohr, is that something that you can make sure is taken care of as part of the development agreement, if this goes forward?
Yeah, that's also something I can ask the developer to, if they're, if they're having a new...
Make sure we don't have anything that fits the current definition of an invasive, an invasive species, please? Make sure we don't have anything that fits the current definition of an invasive, invasive species, please? So the resolution has been moved and seconded and the ensuing discussion resulted in the addition of conditions F and G. But parliamentary procedure would, should dictate that those could either be amendments or they could be friendly amendments if both the mover and supporter, in which case we won't take a vote on those as separate amendments. Is it okay with you as the mover, you as the supporter?
I'm in favor of that.
F and G?
Yes.
Sir.
Did you want to add something about invasive species or conditions on this or?
That might.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, thank you, that, that might be the cleanest, most certain way, so in the hustle and bustle, there isn't any question gets overlooked, thank you. F, G, H, and how would we like to state that, that, that the landscape plan includes no species under whatever the latest definition is of invasive species? Who publishes that, is it?
Michigan State University, College of Agriculture and Natural Resources has an invasive species. Midwest Invasive Species Information Network with a listing of invasive species.
Oh, Molly, I can't, can't write that.
Michigan, Michigan State University is probably enough.
All right. So no plants added that fall under MSU's.
Midwest Invasive Species Information.
You said I wasn't going to have to write all that, I thought. Midwestern invasive species.
Information Network.
And I am writing in pencil, left-handed, so I'm going to smear it and not going to know what it says in a minute anyhow. But that's.
Chair, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is that a standard that is in?
It's not a standard, it's an Arizona, where I was here in October. I will, the last one, if I were to move all invasive species to my state plan, it's a complicated. We're not going to do that condition right now.
So you think don't add it on here?
We just asked if the developer willing to do that.
And, and it's really good stuff, I, I appreciate the comments.
It is a condition, but they're agreeing to do that, they agree to this condition, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and, and it's, really appreciate bringing that up. Heck, forty years ago, Crown Vetch and Autumn Olive were, were supposed to be good for soil erosion and look at what mess we've got now.
So Mark, are you saying that we should or shouldn't include that as a condition? We should include it as a condition, but much more simply worded, or, or not include it at all?
Include it as a condition because the developer is agreeing to do it. But the important thing to remember is that when you're proposing a condition to get invasive, not your ordinance.
Oh.
So, I mean, I, I think invasive species is probably somewhere in your ordinance, but the standard you were citing may not be.
I don't know how to capture that, but Janice will be able to read it back to us.
What did you all think, read that?
Everything we just said, you all.
So, so H ought to be something about developer agrees to not introduce any invasive species. And I guess the informal agreement is that it's going to be whatever MSU's latest, latest list is. Does that seem? Say that again?
The developer will remove any invasive species from the current landscape plan.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion?
I got a quick one. The approval is for driveways and side driveways, but I don't see any side driveways planned. Do we approve side driveways even if we don't see them?
Are you speaking to the individual home?
No, I, yeah, right, in the approval, it said, or in the document, it says side driveways or front driveways. But I'm pretty sure that these are all front driveways.
Oh, I, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
I don't know if there is perhaps a lot of.
Yeah, so there can be side entry and front entry garages, but we have only front driveways.
Right. And I noticed lot sixteen is shaded. Are these, and it does appear to be a little bit smaller than the other representative homes. Are these normally, are these the largest sized homes to ensure that they're going to fit on the locks? I know that Copper Meadows, there were some variances that had to be sought because they'd be built within the building envelope. And these are even more restricted setbacks. These are even smaller locks with smaller building envelope.
Unpageing the A is the detail. Show me a front entry driveway and a side entry driveway. As well as those already largest homes, show me on those details.
So I don't have my previous packet with me, but I think in the last meeting, we talked about some clearances. I, I think I brought up some sort of information about, well, that's my, you know, my pickup is twenty-three feet long or whatever. And I asked Mr. Pascoe what, what he was looking for, for side entrance garage. And the answer might have been twenty-five feet or something like that. But, yeah, there are no side entrances. Were there, were there any side entrances previously?
There is, isn't lot twenty-nine a side?
Twenty-nine looks like front to me.
These are just typical, yeah, my, my, I just, so these are, so these are, at this level, these are just, these are just typical kind of.
So we could have side, we could have front.
We could have side, we could have front, really lot by lot. Lot by lot, reviewing that part of the permit process.
All right.
Front entrance or side entrance driveway, that all needs to be basically at the block number, not a side block number. Because each individual block will be different depending on the house, whether it's side entrance or entrance. So that's really the level of detail that, that becomes a district.
Great, thank you. So I guess to Ms. Mirelli's question, yeah, the side entrance really isn't, or side drives, really not extraneous information then, because we could have some? If that's the point that you were getting at?
I just want to make sure that the, not going to run into problems later down the road where the driveways don't fit in accord.
Yes.
I just see some spots that look a little tight, so I just didn't know that if they weren't represented on the plans, what that would look like.
Yeah, thank you. In fact, I don't know, time flies, it might have been a year or so ago, ZBA dealt with an issue like that where things weren't working out too well with the clearances. Anybody have anything further? Every time I start winding up, gonna hit the punchline here. So it's been moved and supported. We have the addition of friendly F, G, and H to the conditions. If, let me ask one more time, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're ready for a roll call. This is. Sir.
I don't think you do a roll call vote. These open the amendments, these votes require a roll call vote, and is there, in your order?
Parliamentary wise, if it's a resolution, we would take a roll call vote. Might, it might be explicitly stated in our, in our bylaws, I don't know, but. Yeah, I appreciate the point. Typically, we would do this on a roll call instead of voice vote, but that's, no, that's, that's a good comment. Thank you, Ms. Mirelli.
In my reviews of everything, I've, I was wondering if there's going to be a pump house for Multilakes? And if so, would it be Multilakes building it, like something to, I know that Copper Meadows has one and Hartman Farms goes to Copper Meadows. I'm just not sure which one they're going to use and if it was recommended for Hartman Farms to have a generator installed to, I guess, push that up to Copper Meadows. So I don't see anything in the Multilakes realm now that we've added sewers to the plan. Is there going to be a pump station needed or a generator needed somewhere on the site?
Mr. Pascoe and Mr. Rohr, have we gotten that far or is that, is that something you can answer?
We have come that far and they're not required.
Chair, you, you actually have to call for a vote, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I almost called for a vote and then we had more discussion, so I almost got that far. Ms. Mirelli, does that satisfy the question?
Yes, thank you, just wanted to check on that.
And, and in fact, especially since, since we are about to act on the final site plan approval, let's just go around and make sure that if we have anything else, each of our issues has been resolved or at least raised. Ms. Sekanga, anything? Ms. Mayor?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
The upcoming vote will be on the resolution itself?
Resolution itself, and I will attempt to read the added conditions. Mr. Nestor? Ms. Mirelli? All right, we will take the roll call vote on resolution for final, for final site plan approval, twenty PC, two hundred point one, RSG Development, Deletzky. With the additional conditions of F, she'll not be effective until Washtenaw County Public Health Department approves the location of onsite wells. G shall not be effective until OHM approval of the resolution of the findings in the engineering report of July twenty, twenty twenty-one. And H, the developer will remove any invasive species from the landscape plan. Is that everybody's understanding of what we, of what we did? Do roll call vote, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Mirelli?
No.
Mr. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Sekanga?
Yes.
And Stroud votes yes. So the resolution passes on a vote of five, yes, one no, and Ms. Heard absent. Thank you, everybody. See if I can, I can catch up to. This should be agenda item seven. We have two sets of minutes. Let's take them separately. First, minutes from the April thirteen, twenty twenty-one meeting. Do we have a motion to approve, please?
I make a motion to approve the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Support. Sorry, was that Nestor?
Yes.
Thank you. I just had, I just had one issue and sorry, maybe I should have brought that up before we did the motion. But on, on each of these, the last item adjournment, we have a motion by someone, second by someone to adjourn the meeting. And I think if we're going to do that, it should also show that the motion passed on a voice vote and the meeting was adjourned. Now, I mean, you know, in looking up, just, you know, one, I think, representative set of minutes from the meeting that Steve Birch ran, he may have just declared the meeting adjourned when we got to the end. We can do that, I don't think there's any prohibition about doing that. It's just that if we move and go through all of that, then it should at least show that it, it passed and we adjourned. That was, that was, we talked about that a little bit, but.
Would the nation likely make that change in the note that you're going to approve?
Yes, please, because we, we did have a motion and a second. We did take a, a voice vote, we did adjourn the meeting. That might be reasonably not due to.
It was a close vote, if I remember right, three to four, right?
So, so with that.
I had a comment on the May eleventh minutes. Do we require typos or?
Yeah, yeah, we do. Can we hold on to that one for just a, for just a moment? And, yeah, I'm really into typos. And I'm disappointed that if anybody else got one that I didn't catch, but, but. And I swear that Janice puts them in there just so I look for something. It's like, where's Waldo? And I, I think, you know, we kind of go back and forth on it.
She knows you're disappointed.
I do.
To make Marty happier.
So we have a motion by Sekanga, support by Nestor to approve the minutes of the April thirteen meeting with that one little correction at the end. No further discussion, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carried and the minutes are approved. Now we've got the minutes of the May eleventh meeting and that same comment that I made applies to this. Janice will pick that up, do we have a motion to approve or would you like to make the typo and then we'll approve as?
Yeah, under item six, and then we were talking about article four, duties, duties of all members.
Okay.
The last sentence, it says, it is not the preview of the entire board. Should that be purview? Good one. Okay, where, where was that?
I can't even, I can't even slide it, you know.
It's on the second page and it is item six and it says, under article four, duties of all members. The last sentence says, it is not the preview of the entire board, which I think should be purview.
Great, thank you. And would you like to move the approval with that change and then the other one that we discussed?
I will move.
Is it protocol procedure to abstain from, from voting on minutes for meetings that you were asking?
You know, that's, that's a good question, since the township attorney is here. I've, I've seen that go both ways.
The function of the vote is to approve minutes. It is part of your function. The fact that you weren't there, maybe you don't have any corrections to make, but you want to correct, correct type votes. If you do, but on the other hand, if you weren't there, so maybe you don't have personal knowledge. So there's arguments both ways. Frankly, I don't think it matters. So whatever you feel comfortable doing. I mean, there's, there's some things that, as a practical matter, there's no consequence. So however you feel. If you feel you should not participate technically, maybe bring that to the commission's retention and the commission can take a vote on it if it's, if it's that big of a concern. But I think you can participate as well.
But I'm sensing you're probably not going to, thank you, thank you. You're probably not going to support the motion to approve, however. Just kind of getting that feel, support. All right, moved by Mayor, supported by Lewis. No further discussion. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Minutes of the May 11th, 2021 meeting are approved. I think that should bring us up to, are we on agenda item nine, the trustees' report?
Yes, so we had decided previously that the trustee report should be read into the record in case people were attending remotely and didn't have video. But is that still necessary or?
Well, I think, yeah, I think the issue was that they would not, they would not have received a copy of it. Now, I, I didn't check. Are we distributing those here? We may or may not want to, you know, create some more paper in the future, but if you don't mind, at least for tonight.
Well, first is the appointment of the open space committee members. And I see the two chairs of the open space committee are here, so you guys will have to pop up and correct it if it's wrong. But the Board of Trustees welcomes the seven new members of the open space committee chaired by these two, Michelle Stambul Wallace and Laura Sanders, approved, which we approved at our June and July meetings. The purpose of the committee is to learn and educate about open space and farmland preservation. The committee meets at 8:00 PM on the first Thursday of the month at Dexter Township Town Hallway here. And the planning commission members are welcomed and encouraged to attend. Then the American Rescue Plan monies. Dexter Township has met all the requirements for accepting the American Rescue Plan monies. Funds are available for specific purposes such as water and sewer infrastructure, broadband, compensation for essential workers, and recompense for lost revenue as a result of COVID-19. We are estimating now that Dexter Township is going to receive about $650,000 and those funds have to be allocated but not expended within four years. And so we'll be doing some kind of working session that's dedicated to allocating those funds, making decisions about how to use those funds. But as part of the ARPA acceptance requirements, there were a number of policies that we needed to have in place. And one of them is interest policy. And so we did approve a conflict of interest policy with the caveat that there, that there are going to be some minor adjustments and corrections to it after legal review. But once that conflict of interest policy is finalized, it'll be distributed to all the, everyone who's serving Dexter Township and that staff and, and board members, commissioners and so on. So eventually you all will receive a copy of that conflict of interest policy and you'll be asked to sign it. And I didn't say anything when we approved the bylaws, but I don't know if, I'm, I'm trying to, I mean, if there's an inconsistency between the bylaws and the conflict of interest policy, I assume that the, that the Board of Trustees' policy will supersede the, the commission's bylaws.
Yeah, and if that's the case, then we just ought to revisit ours and make them in conformance.
And then we just wanted to welcome our attorney, Mark Roberts from Seacrest Wardle. And he will be coming to these meetings as we, we talked about meetings where, where we think that there may be complex, more complex issues such as this one with the, with the Deletsky property. So we'll be seeing him, perhaps not at every meeting, but, but like to those meetings where we think there may be legal questions from the commissioners.
Any questions for Ms. Sikenga? Thank you for your report. Should bring us up to...
Laura wants to say something.
I'm sorry?
I, I'm sorry.
Ms. Sanders?
I just need clarification on the open space and land preservation committee. We are meeting the first Thursday of every month, but there's not an August meeting. So the next meeting will be the September meeting, the first Thursday in September, okay? We'd love to have people there. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that should bring us up to agenda item 10, concerns of planning commission members, director of planning and zoning, township supervisor, recording secretary, whoever else. So let's go around the table. Mr. Lewis?
Uh, nothing at this point.
Mr. Nestor?
I don't have any concerns, but I have a question. In the minutes that we just approved for May, there's a category there that says approval of planning commission meeting minutes, which it says no minutes, but we do have minutes. I think it's in reference to the minutes that we just approved for the...
The April meeting.
For the April one.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you should actually amend that and put in what we just got done. Do we?
No, that's, that is the action that happened at that meeting for no minutes approved for that.
Okay.
In, in the May, in the May meeting, we had no meetings, so that, yeah, okay.
So it wasn't accurate for that meeting and herein forward, so we did include those minutes.
Okay, so then you'll put it in on the next one and we approve both of these.
Yes, tonight's, we'll record it. Vote and then for approve.
Okay.
Thanks for noticing.
I just thought about it. So other than that, no, other than that, really important topic.
Great, thank you.
Like looking at yourself in a mirror with a mirror behind you.
It just keeps going.
Ms. Sikenga?
No, none.
Ms. Mayor?
Not this time.
Ms. Marinelli?
Not this time.
Mr. Rar?
I'm not concerned about public information or, you know, the lack of progress. I'm longer than all the county here in Tennessee, so I appreciate it. Thank you for your power to play your expertise, I guess. And other than that, the master plan, our, is the middle date was July 27th. We got four submissions, so the review meeting will be in the middle of next week. We will open them and then we'll be selecting a major recommendation to the Board of Trustees for approvals. We just started with the master.
Thank you. Ms. Rakovich is not here, but we do have two other members of the township board. If Ms. Sanders would like to say anything else to us? Ms. Stambulelli?
Good.
Ms. Miller?
My only concern tonight is the microphone. I think Christina and Karen were not speaking loud enough in the microphones to pick up their calls.
And I wanted to get anything, and that was probably the last instruction you gave me before we kicked this on.
And as I was watching your physicians, I thought we could have called them with microphones six to 12 inches closer to them. Because they were sitting back in their chairs and talking. So next time, let's mention where the microphones are in relation to where you are.
And, and, yeah, thank you for that point. I don't think we've ever discussed this with everybody, with, with this group anyhow, but, but the process, so Janice will go through, one of the reasons the minutes are so good and so detailed, even though there might be a typo here and there, is Janice will go back through and whatever she didn't capture first time through, she can repeat and make sure that the words are exactly right and, and capture any motions that are made or whatever. So that's why, that's why it's important, yeah, thanks, I'm telling you now, that, you know, we get a clear record for her to give us great minutes, so.
So you record it and listen to it later and do it?
I go through each meeting twice. I, I take focus notes during the meeting and then when I'm actually typing up the minutes, I make sure every word is accurate, especially emotions. They have to be your words, not mine.
Thank you for the continued great job.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for recognizing the involvement.
It's, yeah, it's not a simple thing at all. And, and even try to capture some of the stuff we say, holy smokes. So anyhow, thank you for that. Mr. Roberts, would you care to give us any concerns or comments?
With my long experience with the tribe, yeah, I don't kind of...
Well, thank you very much for your input tonight. Really appreciate it. Appreciate keeping us on the straight and narrow.
I do have one comment. I very much like having the opportunity to have all the comments. And in the beginning, I was not here as yet, my apologies on Sunday. But I know there was public comment and I understand that on the agenda. So it would have been kind if there would have been public comments before, for people to express themselves in regards to people and regular decisions to go on the first time. So the door has to be open. Because I am concerned about the, I'm not speaking on my first time speaking. I'm concerned about the, the, the board of members on the local municipal. And I could have, you know, and of course, I would have had to say, so I just think it would be, it would have been nice to be able to...
Yeah, thank you. I don't, I don't recall at what point you came in. So near the beginning of the meeting, we had public comment for non-agenda items. I don't know, at seven something or another, yeah, we had, we had just one speaker, Ms. Sanders, at the public hearing. Yeah, public hearing for this. So, so on the agenda, that ends up as item 6B, public hearing for the Deletsky development. So we opened it up specifically for, for that at that point. And right now will be the second public comment, third of the evening, but second for non-agenda items. Anybody have anything else to tell us about anything, any, anything at all you'd like to say?
Marty, can I just add to what you said to Michelle? Michelle, we will have another opportunity to consider, the trustees will, will, this, the, the Deletsky property will be going next to the trustees to consider the develop, to approve the development agreement. And the bylaws, is that right or is it just the development agreement?
You have to do the bylaws and the development.
So there'll be another opportunity for, for public, for the public to comment on the Deletsky development.
Just another comment on public comment. I, I felt that it would have been a great opportunity to get the public comment again once all of you had kind of negotiated before your vote. Because I know that from some of the concerns I kind of put out there, 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 some of them were addressed and some of them weren't. And I did have Bernie comment, but there wasn't an opportunity. So I don't know if that can be... With, with the open space committee, we're trying to add a public comment, a few more opportunities for public comment so that people just get heard. And I know it's not supposed to be a cross, a cross talk, but I, I guess I think that as much public comment as possible.
Yeah, we might, how we do that. I, I appreciate that point, that after we've talked about it for a long time, right before, there might be something else that... Sir?
I, I would count it as another township, the way they inducted the public hearings, there was an extensive presentation, usually by the consultant or the, if, and, and then the, just like you did, to develop what was stand up off of the comments. There may be some questions to change at that point. Then you open the public hearing and take notes of everything that's being said at the public hearing. Public hearing is closed, that cuts off any comment from the public that's per the public hearing. But from those notes, the supervisor, or the chair of the committee, or the chair of the commission would go through and try to address some of the points that were brought up, either by asking the applicant or asking the director of the stage or asking an attorney. There would be an attempt to gather the issue might be on the avenue. I would be hesitant to open up a stellar public hearing because in large part, it's going to be repeated, covered, except for the practical matter.
All right. All right, thank you. With that, public comment will be closed. And item 13, future agenda items. David, have anything for us? Right, in that case, motion to adjourn would be welcomed.
No motion.
Marinelli?
I'll sign.
Moved by Ms. Marinelli, supported by Ms. Sikenga, that we adjourn. All those in favor, yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carried and at 8:48 PM, meeting's adjourned.
Remember, you don't have to do that.
We don't.